This computer. Okay. Cool. Okay, so we've got some new people today. Kay, I think Kay is your first time and Summer. Somebody did you join recently? Is your mic working? Oh, I have to unmute you guys. I have to unmute you guys. Summer, are you new to? I think you are new, eh?
Yeah, it's my first time on the live group, but I'm on the tutorial group for a long time.
Oh, okay, okay. And where are you from?
I'm from Ocean View.
Oh, okay, that's awesome. And Achlak is here. Okay, I see some. Okay, so I think we can start. And like I said, just to remind everyone, if you have any questions, just raise your hand, type me a message on the group, okay? So let's start. So we saw Amaro. He asked a question at the beginning, so that one. So I'm just gonna mute that. Okay. So let's start with Amaro's question. Can you hear me now? Griffco, Griffco, can you hear me now? Okay. Because I haven't started the question yet, so I was just getting everything. Okay, there's somebody in the background, there's somebody whose audio is quite loud. Let me just. Okay, so. Now, okay, that's a bit better. Okay. So let's start. Okay, so this is a parallelogram. And there are some very important qualities of the parallelogram that we have to keep in mind. Somebody's mic is quite loud. Okay. Okay. So it basically wants you to work out lots of things. So they gave, they give you some points here, okay? So they give you A, B, C, D, R, and S. And they say that our diagonals intersect over here. And they say this is a parallelogram and they give you some equations. Okay, so the most important thing for me in this type of question is the word parallelogram. So like the word parallelogram is so important here because there are certain properties of parallelograms that you need to be aware of. So firstly, for example, the opposite sides are equal and they are parallel, okay? Opposite sides are equal and they are parallel. Opposite sides are equal and they are parallel. And then also the diagonals bisect each other, which essentially means that, you know, these are the same also. And these are the same. They bisect each other. So we're using that information, we have to work out. Is that, is Amaro, yeah, she asked the question?
Yes.
No, Amaro, Amaro, the one who asked the question on the group.
Yes. Yes, I'm here.
Oh, okay. So I don't see. Oh, are you Amaro, Amin?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, perfect, okay. So essentially, we have to try and find out these different variables. And what's cool is that they, we can just use the properties of the parallelogram. So, you know, for me, I would say, okay, they give us this equation here. And let's write this equation in standard form. So it becomes y equals 5x minus 17. Okay, y equals 5x minus 17. And that means that we already know the gradient of, of this line AB, okay? And because we know the gradient, we can work out P because we can say that P minus 3. So the difference between the Y values and 6 minus 4 equals 5. So therefore, P minus 3 equals 10. And therefore, P equals 7. Okay, so that should be clear, it's quite obvious. Anybody has a question, you can either speak or raise your hand, doesn't, you know, don't, don't feel shy. Actually, no, wait, sorry, it's P, it's P minus, it's P minus 3 over 6 minus 4. Yeah, P minus 6 minus 4 equals 5. Yeah, and therefore, P minus 3 equals 10. So therefore, P equals 13, sorry, not 7. P equals 13. Okay, so we can fill in there, P equals 13. And we can also work out Q. Why? Because we know that the, the, for a parallelogram, this point in the center is the midpoint of this line. So we can use the midpoint theorem. You guys should be familiar with the midpoint theorem, you should have come across it. It's basically this over here. So you take the, the X values divided by 2 and you take the Y values and you divide that by 2. And so if you take the X values, it becomes minus 4 plus 4, which is going to be 0 divided by 2, which is 0, and we can see that over here. And the, the Y values are going to be 11 plus 3, which is 14 divided by 2, which is 7. So it's going to be, Q is going to be 7. Okay, so we've got for this, and we've got, we've got these two points, now we want to work out RS. And we can also use midpoint theorem because we can use like the reverse, because we know what the midpoint is, now we can work out what the other point. So with the X values, we could say R plus 6, okay, R plus 6 over 2 equals 0. Because it's R plus the 6, so it's the 2X values added together divided by 2, which is this equation, equals 0. So therefore, R must be minus 6, because minus 6 plus 6 divided by 2 is 0, okay? And then with S, we say it's going to be S plus 13, because the 2Y values added together divided by 2 is 0. So it's equal 7. Equals 7. Therefore, S plus 13 equals 14, therefore, S must equal 1. Okay, so we've got the, the values of Q, R, and S. So if, if, does everybody understand that? Does everybody have any questions? It's quite straightforward. The main point is to realize that you've got different properties of the parallelogram. Amaro, you asked the question, is it, is it okay? Does, does this make sense so far?
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Okay, then it says, hence, using the values obtained in 11.1, prove whether CA, which is this, CA is perpendicular to DB. And how do you prove that things are perpendicular? Well, you can look at the gradients and then multiply them together. Okay, and if they equal minus 1, then they together, so you multiply the gradients of the, you know, M of AC times the M of DB. And if they equal minus 1, then you know that they're perpendicular. So let's quickly find the gradient of CA. So it's going to be 11 minus 3, which is 8 over minus 4 minus 4, which is minus 8, so that's minus 1. Okay, so it's going to be minus 1. And then the gradient of DB is going to be, you can say 13 minus 7, which is 6, over 6 minus 0, which is 1. So the gradient of DB is 1. And minus 1 times 1 is 1, is minus 1. So that means that they are perpendicular. But the cool thing about this is if the, you know, I think the reason why they asked you guys this question is because if the diagonals are perpendicular, what does that mean? Does anybody know? Anybody want to give me the answer? What does it mean if the diagonals are perpendicular? And they bisect?
That they meet at 90 degrees?
Yes, I mean, that 90 is, what does that mean? What shape is this?
Right angle.
No, what shape, what, what shape is this?
Great.
No, no, okay, I haven't proven it, because you haven't shown this is 90. It's a rhombus, it's a rhombus. Because the definition of a rhombus is that it's a parallelogram, basically, okay? Parallelogram that has a perpendicular diagonals. Diagonals are perpendicular. So that, so the, so the parallelogram is, they tell you it's a parallelogram. But since the diagonals are perpendicular, which we've shown here that 90 degrees, because we've worked out the gradients, therefore, this must be a rhombus. So maybe that's why they asked you the question, but yeah. So you guys, so, so if you want to prove that something's a rhombus, you have to show that it's a parallelogram with the diagonals being 90 degrees. That's how you show that something's a rhombus. Yeah. Okay, so that's that question. So let's move on to the next one. Amaro, does it make sense?
Yes, he does.
Okay, that's fine, okay. And let's just get rid of that. Okay. All right. And, okay, and it's up to this one. Okay, so this is a cubic graph. So are there particular questions, or do you want me to do the whole question? Amaro?
If you could.
I don't mind, I, I don't mind you. I don't mind doing. Okay. Okay, guys, you see me there. So we have to draw the graph. So the nice thing is I like to, no, that's not what I want to do. I like to, you guys, was really try out this website called Dismos. And Dismos is a nice website which allows you to plot graphs. So, you know. So I like to, to plot graphs using Dismos, it's very nice. So we can type in this function, it's x cubed. And x cubed minus 7x squared. Because I'm not very good at drawing, so I like to just cheat a bit. So let's make it look nice. So you can see, this is a really nice app to have. Called Dismos. Okay, so I'm going to take a screenshot. Okay. So that's 1.1, draw the graph. Okay, so, but they want us to, to indicate the intercept. So you guys see, there are three intercepts. Right, you guys see the three intercepts? And this actually makes sense, because when we find the X intercepts, what do we do? We make y 0, right? So if we take this equation, y equals x cubed minus 7x squared plus 36. And we make y 0, we've got x cubed. And if we've got x cubed, then that usually means that we get 3 answers, which makes sense, because we've got 3X intercepts. Okay? So, you know, they want us to indicate the intercept, so there is a technique that I show you in the concept videos to work out, to solve a cubic equation. So basically, okay, you can just see x cubed. I don't know if you can, it's actually not real. 1 minus 7, 0, 36. Yeah, so if, so what I first do is that you sub in different values, like 1, 2, 3, minus 1, minus 2. And you see which ones give you 0. And it turns out, when you sub in minus 2, it gives you 0. So that means that x plus 2 is a factor. Right? Because if you sub in minus 2, it becomes 0. So basically, what I do is I ask myself, okay, if I've got x plus 2 and I need this, what must I multiply this by to give me x cubed minus 7x squared plus 36? So to give me x cubed, I need to multiply x by x squared. Okay? But if I multiply this x squared by the 2, because if I multiply this, if I, excuse me, excuse, I've got the x cubed done, sorted. But it's also going to multiply by this 2, so it gives me 2x squared. And I need a, I need minus 7x squared. So I've got 2x squared and I need minus 7x squared. So it's going to be, it's actually going to be x squared minus, so it's 2x squared, and I need minus 7, so it'll be minus 9.
Sorry, I didn't get how you got to that.
So I need so I need minus 7x squared. Right? Okay? I've already got plus 2x squared, do you see that? Kelly?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I need minus 7. See, I've already got 2x squared. I've already got 2x squared and I need minus 7. That means I need to add minus 9x squared.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And I can get that minus 9x squared by writing minus 9x. Because this will be x times minus 9x.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay? But now this gives me a problem, because if I write minus 9x, it gives me minus 9x squared. So I've got the minus 7x squared. But it also gives me 2 times minus x. Minus 9x, which is minus 18. So I need to get rid of that minus 18x, but it actually works out so beautifully that if I just add 18. Look what happens, guys. Look what happens. If I add 18 here, it gives me the 18x, so it cancels the 18x from here. But it also says 2 times 18, which is 36. You guys see that?
Yeah.
Do you want me to repeat that? It's quite, it's, it's, you know, it's a, it's quite a, I think it's a difficult thing to grasp at first, let me repeat it. So we need x cubed. So I ask myself, what must I multiply x by to give me x cubed? I need x squared. But if I multiply x squared, so I've got the x cubed now, but I need minus 7x squared. But I've already got 2x squared from here. So if I've got 2x squared and I need minus 7x squared, I need a minus 9x squared. And I can get that minus 9x squared by writing minus 9x, because that minus 9x is going to multiply by this x to give me minus 9x squared. Okay? But because I've written minus 9x squared, I've got a minus 18x. And there are no x's in this equation. Okay? So I need to add 18x to get rid of it. But the way I get 18x is by adding 18. Because this is going to multiply by this x. But the nice thing is that because I'm multiplying by the 18x, I'm also have to multiply this by 2. And 18 times 2 is 36, so I fully factorize this expression. And then I can say x plus 2. And I can further solve this one, and it turns out this is going to be x minus 6x plus 3. And you guys know this, how to solve quadratic. And we can actually see this here, right? You see this, guys? So you see, but minus 2. You've got 3, and you've got 6. And let me, maybe make this bigger for you guys. Can you see, you've got minus 2 as a, as a, as a X intercept, 3, and 6. Because all we're doing is that we're making this graph equal 0, we're making y 0. Which means we're finding the X intercepts. So you guys can see that, does everybody see that? Minus 2, 3, and 6. Awesome.
How come it's not negative 3? Because...
Oh, sorry, you're right, sorry, it's, it's, sorry.
Yeah.
It's minus 3, sorry, sorry, sorry. It's minus 3.
But it's not going through minus 3.
No, but it's, but if you sub in 3, you sub in 3.
Yes, yeah, sorry, I get it.
Yeah, yeah, and you sub in 6, give you 0, you sub in minus 2. Yeah. Thanks, Kelly. So, yeah, let's just move this somewhere. Okay? Um, let's just rephrase all that. Group for those 2. Should be one thing, come on, come to you. That was more clear. And you guys can see that, okay? So I'm going to make this graph bigger, because you, you guys can, I can, okay, I can, I've got the question here also, and it's just can you guys see, if I put the graph here, may bring the question? Yeah. Yeah, let's do that rather. Can you guys see the question now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Most of it.
Yeah, no, you can see the second question, this one. You can see where I'm putting the laser.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Determine the derivative of f and name it G. So this is, this is, so I'm going to take the derivative of the, of the, the expanded out one. Okay, so let's just erase this now, because we know what the expanded out form is. So that becomes x cubed. So the graph is f. So f of x equals x cubed minus 7x squared plus 36. And if you use the differentiation laws, so we will say f dash x, which they want us to call g, is equal to 3x squared minus 14x. Okay, does everybody understand the differentiation rules? You multiply by the exponent, you subtract 1. You multiply by the exponent, you subtract 1.
Yes.
Everybody, everybody fine with that? Okay? Now it says, okay, draw the graph of g. Okay, right. Now, this is going to be, go back to Dismos. This is, there's somebody. His mic is a bit loud. So actually, let's, let me go to this, right? Somebody's. Okay, let's go to Dismos. I think it'll, it's, they just try, this whole, this whole, this whole question is just trying to illustrate to you the relationship between the graph and the derivative. That's pretty much all that is one, and the second derivative. So I thought, you know, let's do it like this, let's actually plot it very nicely, so you guys can see how they've got these 2. Plus 36. Okay, plus. Okay, and then there's an y equals 3x squared minus 14x. And we can even plot the second derivative of y equals 6x. Okay? But let's remove that for now. Okay, you, you guys can still see what I'm doing, right, on the, on the graph, right? Can you see this?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just making the graph look a bit nicer. Yeah, there you go. So this is the graph of the function. Okay? Now it's saying, draw the graph of the derivative. So I actually got the derivative graph here. And I want you to, I want you to have a look, okay? So what's very important to understand is that when you make the derivative equal to 0, what are you finding? Who wants to answer? When you make the derivative 0, what do you find?
Isn't it point of inflection?
No, the derivative, the first derivative.
Isn't it the gradient of something?
So the derivative is the gradient. But when you make the derivative equal to 0, what do you find?
When we get the stationary points.
The turning point, yeah, the stationary point is the turning point. Yeah, but, but, but more importantly, the X value of the turning point, right? So like, you, you don't, you have to find the Y value by subbing it in to the, to the graph, okay? So so when you find the, when you make the derivative equal to 0, you are finding the X, you're finding the, the turning point. So when you make the derivative equal to 0, you're finding the turning point. But guys, whenever you make a function equal 0, you are also finding the X intercepts. Whenever you make a function equal 0, like when you make y equal 0, you're finding the X intercepts. So this is why if you look at the graph of the derivative, notice how when it cuts the X axis, it's at the same X value as the turning point. Do you guys see that? So I'll say again, so look at the derivative. So the blue graph is the derivative graph. And this makes sense, because do you see that the derivative graph is a parabola? And we just said that the derivative is always going to be 1 power less. So if, if the function is a cubic function, the derivative is going to be a parabola. Okay? But basically, when the derivative is equal to 0, that's the turning point. But when, when any graph is equal to 0, that's the X intercept. So when the derivative graph is cutting the X intercept, that's when it's equal to 0. But that's also where the turning point is. You guys see that? The turning point, the X intercept of my derivative graph is the same X value of my turning point. So if I give you any cubic graph, all you have to do is find where the turning point is and go to the X intercept and mark it off and say, that's where my derivative graph is going to cut the X axis. Do you guys see that?
Or could you, could you say it again, please?
No problem. So the derivative, when the derivative equals 0, it's a difficult concept, guys, that's why, that's why I'm going to spend a lot of time in it. When the derivative is equal to 0, that is when, that is the X value of your turning point. When a derivative is 0, that is the X value of your turning point. Okay? But if I were to draw a graph of the derivative and make it equal to 0, I'm making the derivative graph 0. But when I make any graph 0, what am I finding? The X intercept. So since the derivative graph, when it equals 0, it represents the turning point, we know this. But when I make any graph equal to 0, I'm also finding the X intercept. So that's why at the X intercept of the derivative graph, we are finding the X value of the turning point, its correspondence to the turning point. Because at the X intercept, that's when the graph is 0. It's when the derivative is 0. And the derivative is 0 is when, is when. And the derivative is naught is when is when you have the turning point of the the function. Is that is that is that making some sense?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, the other thing I want to show you guys is notice how. When we've got any function, we can draw tangents to the function, right? And the tangents tell me what's the gradient like, gives me a feeling for the gradient. Okay? Because the gradient of the tangent is the same as the gradient of the graph. So but you see, guys, do you see here how? Over here, the gradient is positive because the tangent is positive.
Yes.
And it's positive, 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 positive until we get to here. And then the gradient becomes negative, 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 negative until here. And then it's positive, positive, positive. Do you guys see it? So it's almost like you've got positive, negative, positive. Do you guys see that? Now, let me show you something cool.
We have a positive gradient, right?
Yes. So when I say positive, I mean the gradient. So here, the gradient is positive. Here, the gradient is negative. And here, the gradient is positive.
Okay.
But the blue graph, isn't the blue graph just the graphical representation of the gradient? So notice how. To the left of the turning point, the parabola is positive. Do you guys see that?
Yes.
To the left of the turning point, the parabola is positive. But we also said that to the left of the turning point, that's when my gradient is positive. And this makes sense because you can see the parabola is above naught to the left of the turning point. And then when we go to the right of the turning point, the gradient becomes negative. And so the parabola goes below the X axis. And then as we go back. And the gradient becomes positive, notice how the parabola starts to go above the X axis. Is that that make sense?
Yeah.
No, that's cool.
Like, isn't that cool? You see how like? Because because the gradient is, the gradient is just representing, the 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 parabola is just representing your tangents. The tangent is positive, the gradient is positive. And you can see the gradient graph is above the X axis as long as the tangents are positive. And then tangents become negative, the gradient graph goes below the X axis.
Sorry, the word tangents, I don't know why. It's kind of like confusing me a bit because.
No problem. So the gradient of the tangent is the same as the gradient of the graph. At the point of contact.
Oh, okay, that's what you mean. Okay, yeah.
Nope. So so that's why when I'm saying tangents, that's why I draw the tangent, because if you draw the tangent, you get an idea for the gradient.
Yeah.
Over here, the gradient is positive because the tangents are positive. And then as soon as I go here, the gradient is naught. And then the gradient is negative. And then the gradient is positive, just like the parabola is positive. Then it's negative and then it's positive. Because the parabola is the gradient. So just when the parabola is positive, that's when your gradient is positive. And the parabola is negative, the gradient is negative. When the parabola is positive, the gradient is positive. Because the parabola is the gradient. It's the graph of the gradient.
Okay, but doesn't tangent only touch the graph at a single point?
Yes. Yeah, so I'm not drawing it very nicely. I mean, I'm just, I mean, so it's so small, but. Remember, if you draw a tangent. Any point, this is my graph and I draw a tangent, here's my point and then the tangent is like that.
Okay.
So the gradients of the graph where the tangent touches, so let's say this tangent has a gradient of two. Then where it touches the graph, that graph's gradient is two. At that point.
Okay, now I understand what you mean.
Somebody said huh? As I explained again.
Yes.
Overall, so if you draw, so if you draw a parabola. Let's actually change slides. If you draw a parabola, write this. And I draw a tangent. Now, what is a tangent? The tangent touches the graph at one point. So like, I'm not drawing it very nicely, but you get the idea. So it can be a tangent over here. Touches the graph once, the tangent over here. Tangent over here. Tangent over here. Okay. Now, the central principle in calculus is that the gradient of the tangent is the same. As the gradient of the graph where it touches the graph. At the point of contact. So if this this tangent's gradient is six, this one is three, and this one is naught, and this one is minus three, and this one is minus five. If the gradient tangent is minus five, that means that the graph's gradient is minus five over here. The graph's gradient is minus three over here. The graph's gradient is three over here. The graph's gradient is six over here. That's what we mean.
Okay, so if they ask us another question, just say they give us the ta- the gradient of a tangent at a single, at a point. Uh, in a, you know, question, then we automatically know the gradient of the graph at that point.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. So if they tell you.
Okay.
That at this point two, three on the graph, the tangent at that point has a gradient of five. You can make the assumption that the gradient of the graph is five. Because the tangent is touching that point. And it has a gradient of five. Therefore, the gradient of graph is five at that point. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Is everybody, is everybody okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go back. So.
Sorry, wait, can I just ask one more thing? Can you say that sentence again? So the tangent touching the graph. At that point is the gradient is going to be the same for that graph as the tangent.
So if this tangent has a gradient of minus five and it touches the graph here. Then the graph's gradient is minus five. The derivative of the graph is minus. The graph's gradient of.
Oh, yes.
The gradient.
Yes.
So so that's why. If I draw a a parabola. And this is the turning point. The tangent is horizontal line. Right?
Yeah.
And you and you guys know that the horizontal line has a gradient of naught. Why? And you can actually prove this because if you choose a point like one, two. And then this point is going to be four, two. Because the Y values are the same. It's horizontal line. And if you find the gradient, it becomes two minus two. Over four minus one. The numerator is naught. So therefore, for horizontal line, the gradient is always naught. That's why for a vertical line, the gradient is undefined because now the denominators will be naught. Because the X values are the same. Um, so that's important. So that's why in calculus, your tangent will always be horizontal line at the turning point. Because the gradient of the graph is naught at the turning point. And since the tangent has the same gradient of the graph. The tangent is also going to be horizontal line. Because the gradient of horizontal line is. That make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So so let's just go back there. So I think it wants me to plot the graphs again. So that's fine. It's totally fine. That's Y equals X cubed. Any questions while I plot the graph?
No.
Everybody understanding, it is a lot to process. But that's why I really urge you to watch those concept videos and spend time with them.
Okay, I get it.
Even if.
The the gradient of the tangent.
Yes, yes.
Is the same as the gradient of the graph at that point.
A hundred percent. Well done, Rikka.
Okay.
Is anybody else, anyone else wanna say it? Amada, you wanna say it?
I understand.
Okay. So let's just do that. There we go. Looks like it was how it was before. Okay, so let's look at the next question. So it says, draw the graph of G. So the G is the is the is the turning point. I mean, G is the 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 first derivative. And clearly show all the X intercepts and the turning point. So remember that the 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 derivative graph is also a parabola. So that means that it's also going to have its own turning point. Okay, so. This, yeah, so this is the derivative graph, but the derivative graph can also have a derivative.
Does he can.
Right? Yes, it's a second derivative. And that's why if you want, if you had the second derivative or the derivative or the derivative. If you were to draw a second derivative. It would cut the X axis over here.
At the turning point.
Yes, because remember we said the grade, the 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 X intercept of the derivative. Is the same as the turning point of the original function. So the turn, the X intercept of the second derivative is going to be the same as the turning point of the derivative. And I'll prove that to you. I'll prove it to you. It's plot the derivative. Woo, okay, you see that? You see that? Okay, it's okay. Do you guys see that? See how the second derivative cuts the X axis. At the same X value. As the turning point of its original function. Just like the parabola cut the X intercept at the same exit in at the same X value as its original function. So does the second derivative cut the X intercept at its, at the X value of its original function, which is the derivative. But now, let's just, let's just extend your understanding here. Let's just understand your, extend your understanding here. Notice how the parabola has two major gradients. It has a negative gradient, then a positive gradient, right? Do you guys see that? Negative, then positive. Negative, then positive. You could even draw the tangents if you want. Negative, negative, negative. Let's change the color, change the color. Negative, 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 right? Negative, then positive, 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 positive. Do you guys see that?
Yes.
Now look at the second derivative graph. To the left of the turning point. It's negative. Just like the gradient of the parabola is negative. Because this second derivative is like the gradient of the derivative. It's the derivative of the derivative. Okay? And when you go to the right of the parabola, when the gradient is positive. So does the second derivative. Become positive. Okay, so let's look at the questions. The point of inflection. So the point of inflection is when the second derivative is naught. So that's over here. Okay? It can be determined by solving for F of F double, okay, it's when the second derivative is naught. It can also be determined by calculating the midpoint of the turning points of the cubic. So the midpoint of the turning points of the cubic, so the midpoint of it. So this is naught, this is, this is, um. I think this is about something, four point something. So you just have to solve. So you can kind of see that this is the midpoint of this and that. You guys see that? It's kind of the midpoint. Okay?
It doesn't really look like the midpoint.
Oh.
Doesn't it? Well, I mean, this is, this is four point, if this is four point like, here's the turning point, then here's two point something, four point. Doesn't it look like the midpoint?
No.
I don't, okay, I kind of see it, but I I mean, the one side just looks, okay.
Same.
Okay, yeah, never mind. Looks like when you do that.
Yeah, so what do you guys understand what we mean by point of inflection? Does anybody want to explain to me what they understand by point of inflection? Point of inflection, anyone?
It's where it can fold over. No.
No, that's symmetry.
Oh.
Where they change like the concave down and the concave up.
Yes. Now, what is concave up mean?
Um, okay, so like the smile and the frown, like when it's going down in the.
So so let me show you, let me, let me try and explain it. So. So do you, okay, let's just make it like that. So it's easier to see. Okay. So when you guys look at, when I draw the tangent, can you, yeah, you can see, notice how the tangents over here. They're above the graph. Okay? They're above the graph, above the graph, above the graph, above the graph. But then eventually you get to a point where if you start drawing the tangents, they're below the graph. Below the graph, below the graph, below the graph. And the point where it changes from being above the graph to below the graph. Uh, we, actually, it's not over there. It's actually over here. It's actually over here. The point where it goes from being above the graph to being below the graph, we call that the point of inflection. Okay? And you can calculate that point of inflection by making the second derivative naught. Because do you see how, yes, where the point of inflection is, and yes, when the second derivative is naught. Do you see that? Everybody understand? I can explain it again. Just let me know.
Yes, please.
Okay, okay. So six, so point of, point of inflection is just where, so you'll see the tangents over here, they're above the graph. They're above the graph. They're above the graph. And then somewhere along the line over here, they go below the graph. Okay? Now, the point where they change from being above the graph to below the graph, we call that the point of inflection. It inflicts from one side to the other side. But it just so happens that the X value of the point of inflection is the same as the X value of where. is the same as the x-value of where the second derivative touches the x-axis. But the second derivative touches the x-axis when it equals not. That's where y is not. So that's why to find the point of inflection, we just make the second derivative equal to not. And we solve for x, because that will tell us this value. Okay, because that's when the second derivative is not, and that corresponds to the x-value where this point of inflection occurs. I need you guys to talk to me, does it make sense?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay. What do you notice regarding the axis of symmetry of G? The x-intercept of h, okay, they're trying to make a point here. The axis of symmetry of G, which is the derivative, the x-intercept of h, which is the, yeah, okay, the x-intercept of the point of inflection. They're trying to make the point. The axis of symmetry of G is here. So where is the axis of symmetry of a parabola?
At the y, at the x-intercept of the TP.
Yes, right? So if we draw the axis of symmetry, it's like there. Right? That's axis of symmetry of the parabola. They're asking you, and then the x-intercept of h is here of the second derivatives. And the x-coordinate of the point of inflection, which is here. What do you guys notice? They all have the same x-value. They're all on the same line. The axis of symmetry of the parabola, which is the derivative, the intercept of the second derivative, and the point of inflection of the cubic graph. They're all on the same, so you could actually, if you just worked out where the axis of symmetry, so somebody could ask you, what is the axis of symmetry of a cubic graph? And you could actually work out. Somebody have a question? Somebody have a question? No?
Okay, wait.
Yeah.
After the axis of symmetry for the, for G, I lost you.
Okay, it's fine, it's fine. It's, this is also very messy, let me just make it a bit cleaner. So where is the axis of symmetry of G? So let's just write, what is, what is f? F is the cubic graph. F of x is the cubic graph, so let's just write it in red. It's the red. G of x is the parabola. It's the derivative, and h of x is the second derivative. So yeah. F dash x. If double dash x. Okay. If they are, they're saying, if you draw the axis of symmetry of G, but now G is just the derivative graph or the parabola. So if you draw the axis of symmetry of a parabola, it's going to be at the turning point. So if you just draw it like that. Okay, you guys see that? That's the axis of symmetry of a parabola. Because it divides this half, you can flip over, can fold over, like somebody said, somebody said fold over, yeah? Then it says, the x-intercept of h, where's h? H is the second derivative, and it's the green graph, so where's the x-intercept? Over here. So we can make it in green. Here's the x-intercept of the second derivative. And the x-coordinate of the point of inflection, so where's the point of inflection? It's over here. It's over here. It's where the graph goes from being above to below. What do we notice? What? Somebody said, somebody question? So, you know, I haven't been, I haven't been drawing it pretty accurately, but this is just, yeah, that's the point, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I'm just drawing it very roughly, so just, just believe that that's where it is happening. But the point is, the point of inflection, the second derivative, x-intercept, and the axis of symmetry all lie on the same line, which is a vertical line. That's the point they're trying to make. That's all they're trying to say. Okay? Wow, okay, so that was, that was that question. So luckily, this is recorded, so you guys can watch it later if you want. Okay, so let's go to the next question, which is a, okay, this is a Kaylee's question, it's a trigonometry. So there's a nice concept video, guys, called Approach to Reduction. It's on, it's on your section, my map, it's called Approach to Reduction. And I basically go through how to do reduction. And there's like the three-step method that I use, that, no, 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 no. It's like a three-step method that I use that literally, it works every time. It works every time, and I'm sure, I'll show you the method now. You have to ask yourself, which quadrant am I in? Number two, it's positive or negative. And number three, is it 180 or 90? And I'll explain this now. So you guys are familiar with the cost diagram, so you've got all stations to Clermont. Whatever, doesn't really matter which one you use. Some people are not from Cape Town in this group, but anyway, Clermont isn't Cape Town. But you've got a cost diagram, okay? And this basically tells you where the trigonometric functions are positive. So all of them are positive in the first, sine is positive in the second, tan is positive in the third, and cos is positive in the fourth. Okay? So you take cos 360 minus theta. How I approach this one. Okay, 360 minus theta is that I say, which quadrant is it in, guys? Which quadrant is 360 minus theta in?
In the.
Okay, so that's the first question, which quadrant? And then the second one is, is cos positive or negative in the fourth quadrant? Positive, sorry, I write a positive. And is it 180, 90? Okay, must be 360. It's 360. And if it's 180 or 360, the function stays the same, so it just becomes cos theta. But if it was 90, then it will change to the co-ratio, so the co-ratio of cos is sin. Okay, I'll give you another example, let's try sin 90. Theta, which quadrant do sign 90 minus theta in?
Second.
When?
First quadrant.
First.
First quadrant, because it's 90 minus theta.
Oh, yeah.
90 plus theta is the second quadrant. Okay? So is sign positive or negative in the second, in the first quadrant?
Positive.
It's positive. And is it, it's 90, so I changed to the co-ratio of sine, so it's. So you see, it works every time. Let's do one more. Let's do cos. Let's make it cos 90 plus theta. Which quadrant?
Second quadrant.
Second quadrant. And is cos positive or negative in the second quadrant?
Negative.
So you're right, you're right, a negative. And is it, which one is it, 180 or 360? It's 90. So change the co-ratio, so it's minus sine theta. Done. Okay? So that's how you do reduction. So let's do that for this one. So cos 360 minus theta is going to be just because theta. Cos minus theta, now guys, cos minus theta is in which quadrant?
The fourth.
So you apply the same thing. You apply the same thing. So it's the fourth quadrant, and cos is positive in the fourth quadrant. And minus theta is just 360 minus theta, the same thing. Same thing. Because minus theta just means you're going in this direction. But 360 minus means you're going in that direction. Positive, it's the same. So it's just gonna be cos theta, right?
Yeah.
So it's cos squared theta. Now, minus theta, okay, this is, yeah. Minus theta, let's think about this one. Minus theta, minus 180, which quadrant?
Yeah. Don't you have to add 360 to the minus 180, because it's a negative?
You don't have to, but you can. So your way would work, but you don't have to, but okay, let's do both ways, I'll show you the same ones. But, okay, let's do your way, what is your way?
You add 360 to, to the negative, so minus 90, 90, 180.
180, 180 minus theta.
Yeah.
Right? So it's sign, do you guys understand why is adding 360? If you add 360 to sign, it doesn't change the answer, because sign is a period of 360. So let's apply the rule, which quadrant?
Second.
Second quadrant.
And sign is positive in the second quadrant, and it's 180, so we keep it the same, so it's sine theta. Now, my way, that's right, okay, but my way is just to say, minus theta is here. Minus 180 is which quadrant? You go back to second quadrant. And sign is positive in the second quadrant, so it still gives you sine theta. So both ways give you the same answer, but I just choose which way. So, so, but, but the point is that it's sine theta, okay? Plus sine theta. Now, let's try cos 90 plus theta, what's, what's that? Which quadrant? Okay, I'm gonna ask people, Kaylee, we could do this one for me, because of your question, so apply these three steps. And I want you to tell me what is cos 90 plus theta.
Sorry, I'm eating.
Okay, 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 wants to go some.
Won't it be sine theta?
Go through the process, go through the process.
So which quadrant? 90 plus is in the second quadrant.
Right.
And then sign is positive, oh, but it's a co-ratio, so it'd be cos theta.
No, it's, it's causal, really, so it's a co-ratio, because.
Oh, yeah, so we sign theta. Because it's in the second quadrant.
Okay, but because, but cos 90 plus theta, which quadrant? Second quadrant, right?
Second quadrant, cos is negative, so it would be minus sine theta.
There we go. There we go, okay. So then you gotta get cos squared, and do you guys recognize something? Cos squared minus sine squared.
Oh, it's the identity.
The identity.
Yes, what's the identity? Is it minus one?
It's just cos 2 theta.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay. Now 10 to 25, who wants to do that one? Because now it's a number, but it's the same. It's the same.
I'll do it.
Don't you just punch in 10 to 25 into the calculator?
Go without a calculator, let's do without a calculator. Okay, let's do without a calculator. Kaylee, what are you gonna do?
Um, can you minus 360 from it, and then you can have 180 plus 135? And then you know it's in the third quadrant, so it's gonna be a positive. Was that too much work?
So you don't, I don't think you have to minus 360, because it's already within the range, so.
Oh, yeah.
Two, 10, just 180 plus 45.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So 1, so 45 is now theta, but we have, so do you wanna try it? So what is, what is it gonna be? So what's to apply these rules here?
So it's going to be in the third quadrant, so it's gonna be a positive tan, so it's just positive tan. Five, which is a special angle, so isn't it just gonna be one?
Yeah. And if you guys want to know why 1045 is one, I made a video on the concept, it's called Understanding Trick Functions Using Circles, so I explained to you why 1045 is one. It's a really cool video, if you wanna learn, like why is sine 90 not, why is cos not one, so that's just a nice video. So 1045 is one, yeah, so the 10, so, so, so you can actually do this without a calculator, so that's a nice thing. So it's one minus, right? So once you do cos, okay, Riffco, you're gonna do cos 180 plus theta for us. Cos 180 plus theta.
Cos is in the quadrant.
Which quadrant?
Cos.
This one, this, you know, you look, you look at the angle. So you say which.
Yes, in the sixth, now in third.
Third quadrant, okay?
So it's negative.
Yeah, and the third step?
It's still going to be outside. It's still gonna be cos.
It's still gonna be cos, because if it's 180 and 360, it stays the same, and if it's 90, it changes to the co-ratio.
Yes.
So.
Negative cos and.
Right. But it's squared.
I have a dumb question, though.
Yeah, sure.
How, okay, from the beginning, what now? How did the square come?
Why did the square, what do you mean?
Be on top, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but cos, cos squared theta minus, no, below that.
How did we get one?
No, how do we get this squared PCP?
How did we get what? Sorry, I can't.
The cosine squared theta, right above the one.
Yeah, this one, this one.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, because cos 360 minus theta is just cos theta, because it's the fourth quadrant. And cos is positive, and it's 360, so it stays the same, so it's cos theta. And cos minus theta is the same as cos 360 minus theta, it's the same. It's just still in the fourth quadrant, so you apply the same. Because cos times cos, cos squared.
Oh, it's two cos, okay, never mind.
Yeah, okay, okay. So, 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 so she said it's minus cos theta, but it's gonna be squared, so what does that become? It's just cos squared, it's gonna be positive cos squared.
Isn't that an identity?
Yes, no, no, no. Well, 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 actually, you have to do some manipulation, but we said that.
Someone, I said that.
No.
Mohammed.
Mohammed, okay. It is, you're all right, but what we should do, it's not 1 minus 2 cos squared theta, that's identity, what's the identity?
1 minus 2 sine squared theta.
But the other one, because is? Got it on the screen.
Can't you just divide it by minus one?
Do you guys see? They're similar. So how do you go from here to here?
Can't you divide it by minus one?
You take, you can take minus, you can take minus one out as a bracket, so it becomes minus 2 cos squared minus one, you guys see that?
Mm-hmm.
And now you've got the identity.
Okay, could you explain that again, please?
Okay, which part, which parts?
When, when you change it, how did you get it to the identity?
Okay, so you agree, are we okay with this so far, one minus two cos squared theta?
Yeah.
Okay, so you rightly pointed out that this looks like an identity, but it's not exactly an identity, it's just swapped around.
Yeah.
So in maths, if if I give you something like A minus B, that's the same as saying minus B minus A. If you multiply out.
Yeah.
So if you ever want to swap things in maths, you can just take a minus and then put it in brackets and swap it.
Okay.
So you want to cos squared minus one, because that's cos two theta. So that's why I'm gonna take the minus out. And then it becomes two cos squared theta minus one. Which means I can convert that to cos two theta. So it's minus cos two theta. Does that make sense? And isn't this also just cos two theta?
Yeah, so it'll just minus one, your answer.
Your answer is minus one.
That's cool.
So do you guys see how this whole question was just this? Just this. If you know this, it's such a powerful skill. The whole question was there. And then just knowing that you can, you can. I mean, the other way is just to make the sine squared plus cos squared, but then just makes it longer, you know, because if it's, yeah, anyway.
So I put a trick question on the group. That that you proved that LHS equals RHS.
Yes.
And then someone said I did it wrong, could you do that question, please?
Okay, that was Leila, she was, she's one of the other tutors. Okay, I can do it, I can just explain it, you guys, okay. We did it in the last session, but we didn't record that one, so I can just do it quickly. Okay, I don't know what you did, so I'm just gonna do it like I would do it, that's okay. So for these questions, I, you know, I think what I did was I, so when you've got ten, you wanna convert to sine of a cos, right? So. So two sine X over cos X, right? You guys know the identity, and then sine two X is two sine X cos X.
Yeah.
Okay, and then. So, you know, that's over two sine squared X, so we can't really do much with the two sine squared X. But I don't like this, I like to have my fractions like nice and neat and in one line, so I I'll multiply by cos squared over cos squared. Like I'll make, I'll make, I'll make cos squared, like cos X a a common denominator. Okay, so that becomes two sine X minus two sine X cos squared X over cos X. Do you guys see that? Because it's gonna be two sine X of a cos X, which is that. And then if you, then use it with two sine X cos squared X of a cos X, which is just two sine X cos X. Do you guys see that?
Yeah.
It's the same. And then we could say divide that by two sine squared X. When if I, if you've got lots of fractions, I just like to make it easier for myself and do it like that. But remember, when you divide by two sine squared X, that's the same as say multiplying by.
Wait, sorry, are you, why are you dividing by two sine squared X?
Because it's over here.
Because over the.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah. And then we can always take outside X as the bracket, so it's two sine X. For one minus. Cos squared X, right? Right, two sine X, one minus cos squared X, do you agree? But isn't one minus cos squared X just sine squared X? Yeah, okay. Over cos X times two sine squared X, bringing that over from there. Okay. That cancels, that cancels, that cancels, that cancels, you're left with sine X of a cos X. Okay, yeah, I sometimes go a bit fast, so you must just tell me to, so. We, does everybody understand this part? Or must I go back?
No, I got it from, I got it to that point, I mean.
Yeah, okay. So now I just thought, look at this two sine X, this is, this is two, this is two, it's staring at me, man, so I have to factorize it. Okay. So two sine X. Open brackets, one minus cos squared X, do you agree? Over here, one minus cos squared X, but isn't one minus cos squared X sine squared X? Sine squared X plus cos squared X equals one. Therefore, sine squared X is one minus cos squared. And therefore, we left with this situation. It will be multiplying by the two sine squared X. And therefore, we can cancel the sine squared, the twos, and then we're left with sine X of a cos X.
Which is ten.
There we go.
Oh, okay, thank you, now, okay, now I get it.
Okay, so do you see how, the only thing that we did was just convert this to sine of a cos and then multiply. So what I want you guys to realize is, I think students often think these, most of the difficult questions in maths don't actually require difficult maths. I know it sounds weird, but like, most of the time, it's all the same stuff that you've been taught, just asked in a different way. So that's why I always tell students, if you know the work well, then it's just a matter of being able to manipulate it. Because every step that we've used in this question has been stuff that has been taught, all you're doing is that you're just combining it. Okay? Okay, let's go to the next question, what's next? Okay, this one, we have, wait, 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 I've, no, no, it's. Right, right, this one, okay, Kaylee, okay. Kay, this is an interesting question. And this, I've only seen this type of question a couple of times. It's not an easy question. But basically. Whenever I see sine two theta, is is everybody there with me? You guys are, I know it's, it's, it's a, it's a lot. Whenever I see sine two theta, I think of the identity two sine theta cos theta, so this becomes ten. Because it's five times two. Okay, everybody agree?
Yeah.
And then cos two theta. Now, the thing is with cos two theta, there's so many options, so like, what do you change it to? So that's why I always leave cos two theta for last, and then I ask myself, okay, what type of question is this like? So because I saw this. I thought to myself that perhaps we're gonna get a question like X squared plus XY plus Y squared equals not, a question like that. I feel like that's eventually what this question is gonna come down to, it's gonna be one variable, two variables, three, uh, within the other one.
How did you come to that conclusion, like based upon the eight cos squared?
Because, because, not just based on that, because you've got a sine squared that you can get from here, you get a cos squared that you get from here. And you get sine squared plus cos squared from here, so you've got sine squared, cos squared, and then you've got two X times Y. You've got two multiplied together. That's your, that's your middle term.
Okay.
So, so you've got, this is the middle term, and then you've got this, like, cos squared on the one side, sine squared on the other side. This is just from experience, that I've I sort of looked, I thought of that possibility. And and because of that, I decided to just convert it to cos squared minus sine squared.
Sorry, I have another question, I never know, I never know which one to convert it to, and I know that comes with like time and practice, but is there like a, like a, I don't know, something you could kind of say that would help in the situation where you have to choose? I just don't know.
This for cos two theta?
Yeah, like which one out of the three options to choose from?
So, so that's what I was saying, like, because I saw this ten, this, this actually was the giveaway, the fact that you've got two things multiplied. Um, it's like you guys know, like X plus Y squared equals X squared plus two XY plus Y squared, so when if I, if I see something like this, this type of combination uh, of 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 a number plus two, two um, separate things multiplied. I always think to myself, maybe it's gonna be this type of um, construction. It's not always, but that's why in maths you've got to have these options, you you have to think to yourself, what are the different possibilities? So, um, that's, that, 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 that for me was the clue. So let's just, let's just carry on, so, so the reason why I chose cos squared minus sine squared, because all the other ones have numbers. All the other ones have, have, have numbers. All the others have numbers, so yeah, you've got a number, yeah, you've got a number, this is without numbers. And then this one, X squared plus two XY plus Y squared is no number. Do you see that? There's no, there's no constant, that nine or eight. So that's why I thought let's rather convert it to um, to this one. So that it would fit with this, with this pattern.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's not easy, I mean, it's not, it's, that's why I practice, because I've seen this type of question before. Not exactly this type of question, well, not exactly this question, but this type of question where you have this construction, that's what, that's why you guys just have to do lots of examples. But you have to do the examples while knowing the concepts, you see, that's, that's the thing, a lot of students just lost the example, you don't understand the concept. And that's like trying to build a house without having a foundation. And always good a fool. So, okay, so let's go, so we've got ten sine theta cos theta. The cos two theta, we're gonna change to that, and then the cos with theta, we can leave it like that, and then three, I'm gonna change to sine squared plus cos squared, so remember. Minus three, it's just minus, you know, like, 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 sine with these, if it's cos with theta is just one. So therefore, three is just equal to three times that. Right? And minus three is just minus three times that. So that's what I did, and then so it's a lot to write downs, let's just make it nice and neat. So it, what I actually did when I saw this is that I replaced sine theta and cos theta with X. So sine theta, somebody have a question, or someone just laughing, or is somebody a question? Somebody's laughing. Is it, is it, okay, you guys will just talk, I, I don't wanna talk to myself, this, this is not the. So I converted sine theta to X and cos theta to to Y, okay? So therefore, this would be ten XY, right? Do you guys see it? Ten XY. Minus X squared. Minus Y squared, actually, sorry, it's the other way around, the other way around, it's Y squared minus X squared, because cos is Y. And that's equal to eight Y squared. Minus three times X squared plus Y squared, because three times one, which is cos squared plus sine squared. Is everybody clear with how we got this? Must I repeat it? Okay, I can repeat it.
Yeah.
Okay. So five sine two theta is just ten times sine theta cos theta, because it's five times two sine theta cos theta. But I'm converting all my signs to X and my cos Y, okay? And therefore, this becomes ten XY. Right, and that's gonna be ten XY minus cos two theta, but I've conversed cos two theta to cos squared minus sine squared. But cos squared is just Y squared, and sine squared is just X squared, so it's Y squared minus X squared. And then it's equal to eight times cos, which is eight Y squared minus three, but I'm going to convert the three into minus three sine squared plus cos squared. Okay? So now we make it, now we simplify, so it becomes ten XY. Minus Y squared, somebody is just, yeah, X squared equals eight Y squared minus three X squared. My pen is getting a bit tired, minus three Y squared, and therefore, this becomes ten XY. Plus X squared minus Y squared equals five Y squared minus three X squared, okay? And now we can take things over, do you guys see how it's starting to come up? How this, this construction, X squared, something XY, Y squared, you guys see that?
Yeah.
So it becomes four X squared plus ten XY, because you take three X over minus six Y squared equals not. And then if you, you can say two X squared plus five XY minus three Y squared equals not, you divide by two. So this is bringing it up. What is that? Okay, and how can we solve this? We can maybe make it a two, there has to be two X somewhere. And it was supposed to be a three. Y, X, three Y, so maybe, actually, no, 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 maybe that couldn't, yeah, no, it has to be actually. Yeah, it's gonna be a sixth, so let's just do that. Plus three Y minus three Y. Yeah, two X squared. Plus six Y minus XY, which is five, minus three Y squared equals not. Therefore, two X equals Y. And X equals minus three Y. Therefore. So we can start replacing this stuff now with the variables, so we can say two sine theta equals cos. Now, I hope you guys are, okay, okay, sine theta equals minus three sin cos, so cos. So this is what we've left with. Does anybody have any ideas?
Can you not know?
Riffco, any ideas?
Can you not do like simultaneous? No, you can't.
Mo, Mohammed, do you have any ideas? This is a tick, Amaro. How many people do we have? Have you guys heard of dividing by cos to give you ten? Have you guys been taught that? So you can divide by cos. Because what's sine divided by cos? So, so you get two. Sine theta over cos theta, which is ten. Equals one, and then you divide by cos that size, so it becomes ten theta. Equals minus three. And then ten theta equals a half. So do you see how that's much easier to solve than this?
Yeah.
So that's just a technique. So this is just stuff that you must just, so this is now, it's a skill that I've taught you. So that whenever you, you, you get these questions in the future, you can say, okay, I know how to do that. So how do you, so now do we do this? So ten theta equals a half. Uh, with ten, it's easy to do three equations, because it's only, it only has a period of one eighty, so it's only one on, so that you really need. Is this the general solution that they want?
No, it just said, it just said simplify.
Don't they want you to solve?
Wait, let me check.
Oh, okay.
No, I just closed my book. Sorry, just give me a sec.
It's always in the meanwhile. Um, they would take the reference angle of, of half. So you can say arc tan of half, which is going to be twenty six point five six. Plus one eighty k. Okay, and you say arc tan of, 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 of minus three, which is going to be. Theta equal minus seventy one, you can say plus one eighty, just to give you a positive. So it's one of eight.
Yeah, it is, sorry, it is the general solution for each of the equations.
Okay, so here's the answer. So which quadrant is this in? One oh eight.
The second.
Second. And tell me about ten in the second quadrant. So now do you understand why it's negative three? Which quadrant is, is twenty six point five six in?
The first. And it's positive.
Half is positive. So do you understand all these things connect to, to each other?
Yeah.
So did somebody say something? No problem. So is everybody fine with the general solution? Yes or no? Yes or no?
Yes.
No problem. No, guys, I, I don't mind repeating myself. Um, so we got these equations, so we divided out by cos to give us ten, so it's two ten equals one, ten theta equals a half. Ten equals minus three. So I took the reference angle, so you just say arc tan of half, and you pick twenty six. And you say plus one eighty k, because after every one eighty degrees, ten repeats itself. So that's why you say plus one eighty k. And then for this one, if you say arc tan of theta, it gives you a negative on the minus seventy one. So you're just trying to calculate this now, arc tan of minus three is minus seventy one. But I added one eighty, just make it a nice positive number, so it's one of eight. Okay? And then all I was, all I was just trying to say here is, this is in the first quadrant. This is the first quadrant. This is the second quadrant. Ten is positive in the first quadrant, and ten is negative in the second quadrant. So that's why you notice how in this quadrant. It's negative, we've got a negative answer. In this quadrant, the first one is a positive answer.
Thank you.
That's just to make things nice, like to. To, to, like, I, I won't test you on stuff like that, but it's just nice to know. Okay, so let's look at Amara's next question. Guys, we're going, so somebody's mic's a bit loud. I don't wanna mute you guys. Okay, it stopped. Okay. I love these types of questions.
Uh, is this lesson going to be recorded?
Yeah, it's recorded.
I'm just gonna miss the last twenty minutes of the lesson.
Yeah, no problem. I, I will send it to the, to the group, and then you guys can access it, because I know sometime, because last time students were taking pictures of the. Of the stuff, so these you guys can record it, so you can come back to it. Okay, no problem. Uh, okay, so let's look at, are you guys still going strong?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Kaylee, Roland, Roland, you haven't said anything. Okay. And Amaro and Summers, okay. Um, in the diagram below, A and B are the x intercepts, okay, we can see that. Of the graph, x squared minus two x minus three, okay? A is a straight line. G, no wait, A, so a straight line, a straight line G. Through a cuts F at C, okay, they all, this is all the stuff that they've represented. And, okay, M is a point on F, okay? And N is a point on G, okay, M and his power, okay, so that's important, so we'll just put that there, it's parallel to the y axis. Okay. And then M N cuts the x axis at T, and they've shown that, show that G of X equals X plus one. And I think this is quite a simple one, because. You've got a point, whenever you have two points, you can just work out the. The gradient and subbing, okay, so. You can use the, so the gradient is going to be, here are the two points, right, it's naught one. Naught one. And four five. So you've got two points. And then you can just work out the gradient, so it's gonna be four over four, which is one, so it's y equals one something, and then you can just sub in. Uh, points, so if you sub in four into. So it's gonna be one x plus C, so, so if you sub in. And of course, the y, it's, it's one, so it's x plus one, because the intercept is one. So it's y equals x plus one, of course. Okay, calculate the, if anybody has questions, just stop me. Calculate the coordinates of A and B, so A and B are the x intercepts. Okay, so if you wanna work out the x intercepts, you make y naught, so you can say naught equals x squared. Minus two x minus three. Therefore, naught equals, so you have to factorize, so you can make it x minus. Three x plus one. And therefore, x equals three, and x equals minus one, and that makes sense, because you can kind of see that over there, okay, that's A and B. And then, the range, okay, that's a very important question, so a lot of students struggle with this, so yeah, we have made a concert video. On the range, but basically, you can think of the range as all the y values. All the y values. That are, that exist. That exists. And if F is the parabola. What do you guys think the range is? Anyone?
It's where the, it's where the turning point ends, I mean, no.
Yeah, where the turning point of the, the y value of the turning point begin.
Yeah.
And then going up infinity.
So if it's, it's just the y values that exist, so do you see, if I draw a line, let me do this, so this is a nice way to do it, so. If you draw a line, right? So, you can see here. Let's do it like that. Do you guys see how there's no y values here? There's no y values here. So why doesn't exist below the, below the turning point? Do you see that? There is no y value. So therefore, the range does not go beyond this point, so, so. And then if you go up, you notice how there's y value, there's y value, there's y value, and this will go up to infinity, because the parabola goes on. So for the parabola, the range is just going to be all the x, all the y values. Above and including the turning point. Exactly, so, so you find the turning point, so who's gonna find the turning point?
So I'm doing it, so the x value of the turning point is minus one, so now just, I'm finding the y.
X value of the turning point is? What are you, what is the x value of the turning point? It's gonna be one, okay, so how would you find, so, how did, how did you know it was one? How can you, how by looking at the graph, can you see that the x value turning point is one? Anybody wanna give it a go? Kaylee?
How do you know when the y is one?
How do you, how do you know that the x value of the turning point is one? Because the x intercepts are minus one and three.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see that.
So therefore, this would be one, something, one, something, and then you just sub one into here. So it's one minus two, which is minus one, minus three, which is minus four. So therefore, what's the range? Yeah, so you would say y is an element of the real numbers. Y is an element of the real numbers. But y is greater than or equal to minus four. So you, you won't write x, right, because it's a range. It's, it's range, so what's the y values? What's the domain of this graph, by the way? What's the domain, guys? Anyone wanna give it a go?
Isn't it infinity?
Okay, we don't like to use infinity. Okay, well, you, what are you trying to say?
And so, um, x is an element of real numbers, and then in brackets, just infinity going upwards. I don't know.
Infinity going upwards?
Yeah, like positive infinity.
It's actually just x is elements of the real numbers.
Oh, do you just finish, okay?
It is, yes, but, but, but there is no x value that, that the, the graph can't be. So you could sub in any x value into this equation, and there will be a y value. For parabola, for normal parabola, it is always x is the element of the real numbers. Unless there's a restriction. So you would have done restrictions in grade twelve, I don't know if they taught you restrictions.
So how would you write if there is a restriction?
So sometimes, oh, it's just. So sometimes, when they gave you inverse graphs. They might give you a parabola, so in my exam, when I was in the trick, they gave me a graph like this. So it was like a parabola, and they just said that x is not defined. For x is less than naught.
So, yeah, uh, I wasn't here. I don't know what happened.
What, who said that?
Me, Amaro. I think it's probably my connection or something.
Okay, that's, it's okay. I was, we were just talking about, um, the domain of the parabola.
So, um, did you guys finish the range already?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah, the range is when y is greater than minus four, because you find the turning point. You find the turning point of the graph. And, and you just make it y is gonna be greater than or equal to minus four. Okay, but, but I think Riffco just asked a question about, um. Uh, what if, what if, what if, uh, you get a graph like this, restriction, yeah? So therefore, the domain of this graph is just going to be x is an element of the real numbers. And x is greater than or equal to naught, because x does not exist the side of the world. Do you see? Okay.
Okay.
So let's go to the next one. In, if M and, if M, M N, M and M is six. Okay. Determine the length of OT. If OT lies on the negative x axis, show all you're working, so. They're telling you that MN is six. And they want you to work out this distance. Now, I think students often struggle with this question, because they don't actually understand what MN is.
Yeah.
What is MN? What do you guys think?
Is it perpendicular?
It is, it's, it's parallel to the y axis, right, that's important, yeah?
Yeah.
They say that, it's parallel to the y axis. So what do you guys think? What is MN telling you?
It says that it's parallel to the y axis.
Parallel to the y axis. Yes. Say it again, what do you say? Is it just the y value of M? MN is not a point, eh, it's a, this is a distance. MN is a distance.
Wait, sorry, what was the question again?
So.
Oh, determine the length of OT, okay.
So, no, but, but, but before we get.
I mean, the question you were asking, yeah.
What does MN represent? Because remember, MN, they don't actually tell you what OT is, right, so MN, so like, I could actually, let me do like this. MN could be here. It could be here. They're not telling you the distance.
So isn't MN the same as the y, like the?
So what does, say it, say it, say it again?
You might, I think it's wrong, like.
No, you said it correctly, you just phrased it properly. I got it, you just phrase it.
The line MN is the, like, um, the same as the y axis.
Yes, they're telling you that for a reason. Because what, yeah. So what, so what do you think? What do, what do you think they're trying to tell you? They're trying to tell you, can I give you the answer? They're trying to tell you, it's the difference between the Y value of the two graphs. Because the X value is the same, right?
Oh, yeah.
So if I draw a vertical line. It's the difference between the, the Y values. So if, 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 if my, if I was over here, then MN would be here. If I was over here, then MN would be here. You guys see that? If I was over here, then MN would be here.
Yeah.
If I was over here, it would be here. It's parallel to the Y axis, but it's just, MN is just representing the Y value of the parabola minus the Y value of the straight line. Do you guys see that? So what does that mean algebraically, the Y value of the parabola minus the Y value of the?
Is it the Y value from that point, that from?
Because all, 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 so what you, what you guys must understand is that MN is not fixed. It's not over here. They just, they're just drawing it there, man. But MN could be anywhere, because MN just represents a, the vertical distance between the two graphs. MN could be here, it could be here, it could be here, because they haven't told us where the X value is. They're just telling us that it's the vertical distance between the two graphs. Do you guys see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, they want to know, what is the X value when the vertical distance is six? Do you guys see that? If MN is six. Okay. But now, here's the cool part. How do we work out an expression for MN? And I really think this is very important, because I've seen questions like this so often. That if you understand this, it, it just makes it so much easier. MN is just the vertical distance between the two graphs. It's the difference between the two Y values. Okay? But isn't, isn't, isn't Y equal to X squared minus two X minus three? For the parabola. Right?
Yeah.
And for the straight line, what is Y equal to?
It's equal to X plus one.
X plus one. And I just told you that MN is the difference.
Yeah.
Between the two Y values. So what do we have to do?
So we have to subtract.
You subtract the graphs.
Oh, and then you can work with it.
Minus X plus one. And what must that be equal to?
Six.
You guys got it?
Yeah.
Do you see how cool it is?
Yeah.
How many marks is that one on?
It's four.
Okay.
Okay, but I mean, it doesn't really matter how many marks. I mean, you understand, that's the most, like, the most important.
Yeah, it's just like a lot of thinking.
Minus three X minus four equals six. So it's X squared, wait, sorry, sorry. X squared minus three X minus four. Minus three X minus four equals six. So X squared minus three X minus ten equals naught. So X plus five. Oh, I see it. Okay, X plus five. Uh, no, X minus five, sorry, X minus five. X minus five, X plus two. Do you guys agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
So look at this, right? Look at this. How many answers are there?
Two.
Why?
Because whenever we find, um.
Somebody said it, somebody said it, so you guys, somebody said it.
Because whenever we, we make the function equal to zero, we always get two.
Yes, but now, if I told you that MN is what? MN is what? It's the?
Distance. The difference.
So that means, what is, what is this, what is this answer telling you?
That is the difference.
It's not six.
No, it's, what is it telling you? So you've solved for, you, you, you've said that the difference in the two graphs must equal six. But the answer is telling you that there's two answers. What does that mean?
Isn't it that, like, it's, um, the difference is six at another point?
Yes. Who said that? Riffco?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you repeat that, please? I didn't get.
So, so we just said now, so, so we said that, that we agree that MN is the difference between the two graphs.
Yeah.
Okay? And we're saying that that difference is six. So we're basically asking the equation to tell us. We're asking the equation to tell us at which X values is the difference between the graph six.
Oh.
Between the two graphs. And the equation is telling me, Elias, that at X equals minus two, which is over here, the distance is six. But also, when X is five. The distance is also six.
Oh, okay.
So do you, do you guys see why I told you at the beginning that MN is not just over here? MN is just the difference between the two graphs, the Y value.
Yeah.
But in the question, what do they say?
In the negative axis.
So they must always tell you something. If they specifying the, if they specifying the negative X axis. That should immediately tell you, hold on, I'm gonna get two answers here. Okay, yeah, so, so. Okay, so at X equals minus two, that's when the distance is ten, six. So they're asking you what is OT? So what's OT's length? It's gonna be two, because OT is the.
Negative two, so, yeah.
But it's a distance, so it's gonna be.
Two.
Positive, yeah. So, and then the coordinates of N. What would you do to work out the coordinates of N?
Yeah, the Y coordinate is negative two.
There we go. And so you sub minus two into the straight line graph, right?
Yeah, we need to answer why.
There we go, okay. So do you guys see, it's, it's all, it's all logical. Okay. Okay. Can I just look at the next question?
Sorry, my phone's about to die, so I have to leave, but thank you.
Can't you charge it?
No, I'm, my charger is like in the other room and, yeah. My dad's using it for his iPad, so I can't, and it's on like three percent. But thank you, I'll watch the rest of the thing, yeah.
Okay, yeah. What time is it now? Okay, it's five, okay, well, good.
Oh.
Let's just finish the question.
Um, sorry, yes, could, I'm so sorry, but could you repeat, um, how you got the coordinates of the N again, please?
Okay, so N is just, N is just going to be, you know the X value is minus two, right?
Yeah.
It worked out that at minus two, that's where this is.
Yeah, it speaks, yeah.
You know the equation of the straight line. So you just sub minus two, and then it gives you the Y value, which would be minus one, because you said. Yeah. So now, next question is determine the equation of the tangent to F. My goodness, okay, let's just erase, erase. See, so I, I, I sometimes find the questions funny, because they like to make it like so fancy. But it's actually not that, um. It's not that difficult, but they make it look so, like, what is going on here, okay? So that's the, you have to learn how to read questions and like, understand like, what they mean. Because I think sometimes you don't actually understand the question. That's the saddest thing for me, is that you are expecting students to answer this question. But we don't even understand what you, what you're asking. So how can you answer the question? You don't explain. So maybe they should even, they give a course on, for students on how to understand my questions. Maybe. Okay, the equation of the tangent to F, parallel to G, where's G? Okay, okay, alright. So the equation of the tan, okay, so we're drawing a tangent, parallel to G, right? Do you guys see? G is a straight line. Right? Wait, who's still here? Okay, okay, there's still people here. Okay, um, that's four people, okay. So they're telling us that the tangent is parallel to G, right? So here's my tangent. So it's the same gradient, okay? And they're wanting us to work out the gra, the equation of the tangent that's parallel to G. So it'll probably be like, yeah. Okay, like, yeah. Do you guys see? Like, it's probably gonna be like, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it won't be here, because that's perpendicular, probably be like, yeah. Okay? You guys see, it's kind of like, like it's only touching once there, but if it's here, it's touching twice. It's not touching the wall, so probably, yeah. Okay. Now, it is the equation of the tangents. Now, if you want to work out an equation of a tangent, you need what? You need a gradient.
And a point.
And you need a point, okay? So do we have the gradient?
Yes.
What's the gradient?
Same as for, it's one, no, it's one.
It's one.
Because it's parallel.
Yes. So what could you do to work out the points? What do you think? It involves calculus.
Oh, um, if we only have one point, though, we could find, um. Oh, doesn't it touch? Okay, so the tangent touches at one point, so it, isn't it, I'm, I'm not sure if it's the turning point.
No, well, no, well, remember, the turning point has a gradient of naught. So then we're all in the line. So this one, it won't be naught.
Oh, but if we only know the, at which point the tangent touches then?
We don't know where it touches. That's the thing. So they want us to work out the equation. But they, but do you, do you agree that this? We, we know the gradient of the graph is five, is one, right? At that point. We don't know what their point is, but we know the gradient is one. So what could we do to the graph to work out? When I say the gradient of the graph, what am I also saying?
The first, um.
Yes, yes, yes. So take the derivative. What's the derivative of the graph?
Of the first, of the, of the straight line.
None of the parabola.
Oh, okay, then we, two, two X minus two.
Right. And what do we know about the derivative here?
Derivative equals to, um.
The gradient, so.
Equals one.
So there's our equation.
And then you can get X.
So what's X equal to?
X is equal to, you have a two.
There we go. You solved it. So they've, so you've got the point now.
Yes.
Because you just subbing, listening to the, and then you can work out your equation. Do you guys see that?
And then the Y.
It's from the Y.
By subbing the equation. So the Y value is negative four, ninety fifteen over four.
Yeah, and that, that makes sense, because it's below the X axis, yeah.
Okay.
Did you guys, because it makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last question. It's one mark, but again, I don't even think, a lot of students don't even understand what this question means. But, for my experience, so it's one mark, but students often just leave it out. But, um. Firstly, what does the question actually mean? So they're saying, for which values of K? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which values of K will X squared minus two X minus three? So that's just this graph, right, the parabola? And H of X equals A X plus K not intersect. So the graph of X plus K, what does that mean? What do you know about this graph, X plus K? What can you tell me about the graph?
It's a straight line.
What else? What else do you know about the graph? What else can you tell me about this graph, X plus K? I know it's a straight line, but what do you know about the graph? What's the equation of a straight line?
M X plus C. Y is equal to M X plus C, so the gradient.
What's the gradient?
One.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So do you agree that Y equals X plus K? Let's just do that. Y equals X plus K. Which is this graph, is literally just a straight line graph.
You know the.
With the gradient of one, right? And all they're doing is that they're changing K. K is, what is K in the, in the straight line?
One.
It's, what, what is K represent?
Oh, the Y intercept.
But what does K do to the, the graph? If I change K, how does it shift the graph?
Up and down.
It's a vertical shift, right? It's a vertical shift. So all they're saying to me, H of X equals X plus K is a straight line graph with a gradient of one, that it can move up and down.
Yeah.
That's all, that's all, they're using fancy words here. But all they're saying is that X plus K is a straight line graph with a gradient of one that can move up and down.
Yeah.
And they are asking me, Elias, which values of K, so what, what value, what, how much must I move this graph up and down such that it will not intersect?
Only if it's below the.
With the parabola. So at this value of K, is it intersecting?
Yes.
Yes.
And here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Low than the turning point.
Not the turning point. Where does?
That's for three in. I'm pointing.
Yes, who said, who said, who said, who said it? Who said tangent?
Amaro.
Because what is the definition of a tangent?
That is at one point.
Yeah.
On a.
That is twice, 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 twice.
And they touch at the one point.
Yes, that's why, look at the previous question, you worked out the equation. You worked out the equation.
Yeah.
But all they're asking. All they're asking now, what is the, the, the Y value or the K value? That this graph must be below. Um. So what's the equation of my, of my, of my graph? So what's the equation of my, of my, of my graph?
Your tangent. So the equation of the tangent, so it's Y equals to X minus twenty-one over four.
It equals minus? No, it's one, it's just one X. My, oh, my, oh, minus twenty-one over four.
Yeah.
Right. So that's this line here. That's the tangent. So whenever, so, so K is minus twenty-one over four.
Yeah.
So what happens when I make K lower than that?
It will intersect.
It won't touch.
So therefore, what's the answer to the question?
Like, um, it must be less than.
Exactly. Whenever K is less than minus twenty-one over four, the graphs don't touch.
Oh, makes so much change now.
So do you see how the question looks so, so like?
Yeah.
But it's actually, it's not. And that's the, so must I repeat it again? Okay. So remember, in these types of questions, a lot of the time, like, what you worked out here will help you here. So sometimes it's nice to ask, okay, what, if I answered the previous question, maybe that can help me with the, with the next question. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Yes, and I think I've recorded, I've recorded it, so you can can look at it afterwards. Okay. So then the next time you get a question like this, you better think. You see, do you see how we just broke this down? X plus K just means it's, it's, it's just the graph with a gradient of one that's shifting up and down. That's all that it means. X plus K is just shifting up, shifting up and down. With the same gradient. Okay? Okay. Okay, I'll find, see you guys.
Not much.
And tell your friends to join, please, to refer, tell them. I don't want to send people.
Yeah, okay, I'll tell my friends, because this was so helpful.
They're the same people. No, I did, um.
Right, I'm pretty sure, like.
But they're so.
Also, they're in holiday mode, also, they're in holiday mode, also.
Going to that mode, um, but they're so mean on the group.
I know, but I think they're all in holiday mode. I mean, it's kind of like, who's doing that now, I mean?
Anyways.
Okay, so, yeah. I was gonna say, we gotta have a chemistry session if you want.
Yes, please, any time, actually, I'm serious. I have a few questions, though, but not now. Okay, bye.
Okay, we'll see what we can do. Okay, see you.